Good evening. It is Monday, September 16th, 6:30 PM. This is a meeting of the Common Council of the City of West Bend. More than 24 hours in advance of this meeting, notice that the time, place, date, subject matter of the meeting was posted in accordance to the Wisconsin State statute. I would like to ask our clerk to confirm that this meeting was properly posted.
Yes, it was.
Thank you very much. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do recognize a quorum of our common so tonight. We have Mayor Anger, John Sparts, and Mark Allen will be joining us on line. I am the council president and will be presiding over the meeting. Mayor Anger will be joining us on his phone. We have 12 items on the agenda. Item number one is approval of the minutes from September 9th, 2024.
Motion to approve.
Okay. All the women, Sizer first, and Bill Schmidt second. Any questions or deletions? There are none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Presentation by the West Bend School District Facilities Update by Jennifer Wimmer, Superintendent of the West Bend School District. Good evening, Jen.
Good evening. Thank you for having us tonight. I'd like to introduce with me as well as Andy Sarno, our Assistant Superintendent who oversees business and operations for our school district. And tonight we'll walk you through the culmination, a little over a year's work in long-range facilities planning for our school district. So we started roughly a year ago with community sessions, a comprehensive facilities assessment that would take us not just this point in time, but prepare us for our future, as well as some cost estimating, and then further community sessions to look at the drivers of the project, the facility's vision developed by the board from those sessions. So you see, we focused on making sure that we have safe, secure, and accessible schools and facilities for our community, as well as welcoming maintained and operationally efficient schools. In addition, making sure they're adaptable to meet student needs. So those were kind of our cornerstones as we worked through developing that Phase One of our facilities vision. That ended in August with the formal adoption by our school board of a resolution to show on the fall November 5th ballot. So you'll see that we are asking for 106.25 million to take us into that first phase of facilities improvement. So today we'll walk through all those pieces so you can see each individual building, look at the financial impacts, kind of what's leading us to that point. For reference, for I know as well as the council members, we also have community watching as well. But you might be familiar with the current lineup of our school district. So you can see that we serve, if people are familiar with where Badger is, right across the street is our district office, our Education Service Center. That's that pink kind of square box at the end of that lineup of buildings. And then further behind us is the Rolfs Education Center, and that has our early learning programs there. We have a robust K-4 community partnership with many entities. So this is just one piece of that. We'll still maintain all of that. So as I talk about the 4K components, the head start components, I'm just talking about that Rolfs campus behind us. In addition, we have our elementary schools of Decorah Fair Park, Green Tree, McLean, and Jackson. And our current configuration is grades five, six are served at Silverbrook, grades seven and eight are served at Badger, and then we're famous for our two high schools under one roof. That campus is combined of nine, 12, so we serve there. So you can see that we maintain 1.2 million square feet of facilities. And as we look towards the future and the needs and what we'll need for a footprint, we do not need to carry all that square footage forward. So we have a plan in which we close multiple buildings, the Rolfs Early Learning Center, our district office, as well as Decorah and Fair Park. So I get a couple of questions around, hey, where'd all the kids go? At one time, we had 7,000 students in our district. We partner with the UW Madison Population Lab to do formal studies to know and understand not just the declining birth rates, their impact on not only West Bend, but all communities in Wisconsin and around us as well, but also too, the aging population in our communities. When will those subdivisions flip over, maybe age out, you know, choose different homes and those become family homes again? So our plan takes us forward to look at brightsizing for about 5,000 students. We currently have just around 5,500 students. The population bubbles come through and it's already at the doorstep of the high school. And then we'll plan for again to settle around 5,000 to take us into the future. So that's why we can become more efficient in the footprint that we carry forward. One of the questions I get quite often when we looked at closure was, you know, how did you determine which ones? So that's part of our comprehensive assessment. Very specifically, people ask me around, you know, McLean seems to be the oldest. Wouldn't that make more sense out of the other? But when you look at the comprehensive assessment that led us to which ones stay in the lineup, it's around what capital improvements are needed, the capacity, the amenities in the current buildings, what it would take to carry them forward. So it's based on the price per square footage on what we would do. So that's where we landed on the future lineup of schools. I'll let Andy talk about some of the financial position that the district's in, why the timing was sound to bring forward the question for our community and those implications.
I'm going to back up just a little bit because I truly enjoy the opportunity to get in front of individuals and share some information. We have a graphical representation of our mil rate. And often people wonder, what is a mil rate? Well, it's a taxation rate. Again, we have a levy for a district. We have revenue limits, so there's an operational, and we have referendum opportunities that we present questions to the community that authorizes the school board to enter into debt. And so this historical mil rate, which is the taxation rate upon $1,000 of equalized property values on average across all district parcels, it's a representation of where we've been in the past and even the opportunity that's in front of us right now. So we can go back and look at the 2015 year, and we had a taxation rate of $8.61. I'm going to flash forward just a little bit because we had a small drop, but we had the failed referendum in 2019. And at that point in time, we heard from the community, take care of the debt from the 2009 and 2012 referendums. And you can see the responsiveness that we did by holding the mil rate flat at $7.97 for four years. Since then, as we've seen that debt levy, the portion that was approved in those two prior referendums drop off, we have an opportunity in front of us is that the district is debt-free at this point in time. All dollars have been levied for that prior debt. And now the opportunity then, because that was operational and debt combined, we've now been able to present an opportunity to incur new debt at a rate, a mil rate equal to an estimate of $5.87 that's less expensive than it was even just two years ago when we were still completing levies for the debt, when we're wrapping that up. So it tells a graphical representation of where we were and where we could be with a successful referendum on November 5th. Just a little bit of information, how that might then impact a taxpayer. This is just a couple of different property values. We're estimating $102 for every $100,000 of property value, and then translating to $8.50 per month. I'd like to disclose that this is based on some borrowing estimates, and estimates at this point in time, based on Baird's estimates of where they've seen recent borrowings just within the last month, and we even have a footnote there. Earlier this spring and into summer, we're using 4.75% on a 20-year debt issue that equated to, in addition to the 106.25 million, $59.2 million of estimated interest. But even since those earlier projections, debt issues have been even a little bit lower at 4.25%, resulting in upwards of $8 million of savings. We have school board policy that says we have to disclose that information, and I'd like to say that between principal and interest, on average, would be a dollar or two is the target that we're looking at, again, for $1,000 of estimated value. Okay? Anything?
So when we think about what those dollars are going to be used for, we certainly have comprehensive assessments. They can be found on our website. If you take a look way over to the right-hand side, the referendum has its own tab of information that has all those historical pieces. Tonight, we're going to give you some highlights, but you can map it back to what that assessment looked like, what systems were reaching end of life, what needed to be replaced within the next decade, and how we planned forward. So just a reminder that we are at the conceptual plan stage. So what you see before you is concepts. It helped us to determine what would be needed at the campuses we carry forward so that we could do some cost estimating and get us to this point tonight. Also, just a reminder, those budgets are based on conceptual scope. I'll show you a little picture of what those designs look like and what they are and aren't. But again, we haven't gone through the process of bid packages and things of that nature. Our first step in the way our finance works is to ask our community for permission to enter into that borrow. So that's the first step we need to take, and you see us doing that for November 5th. So this is a little visual to show you kind of where we are and where we aren't. As I talked about in the introduction, we've done over a year's work of really looking at the assessment, making sure we're looking at every different facet and configuration, and then we're looking at kind of what are those pieces in that Phase One puzzle. Once we clear November 5th, then determining if we have a successful referendum, we would enter into the design process and design those pieces, again, that are just represented by some squares on some maps at this point. So we have not engaged in that process. And then you can see, I foreshadowed, we'd go through a construction, development of those documents, do bid packages, things of that nature, stage our borrows, et cetera. So we're right kind of in the middle of asking the community the question. So for us, we already owned a property in Jackson. It's where the former fire station was, and this was again, part of a prior referendum that was not successful to replace Jackson Elementary School. There was conversations around, do we still use that property we already own? Should we look at shifting that in some way? And the reality around the Jackson community, it's one of our fastest-growing communities, and looking at moving those students, which they had examined in the past, moving four- or five-year-olds to bus them up to another location in ours could take well over an hour and a half and added transportation costs. So remaining in a community school, utilizing the land that was already purchased for that purpose was important. And again, the concepts on this design are simply concepts. Those driveways might move. If you're in Jackson, you realize that the elementary school right now is on the corner, does not have a parking lot. It does not have off-street drop-off. Our police department there is as supportive as the one here in that they help navigate drop-off and pickup to make sure it's safe, again, being on a main road there. So we're looking at designing that school to be three sections. And what I mean is, it would have three kindergartens, three first grades, three second grades, three of every grade level that it would serve as a K-5 school. That gives me room to serve the population there without overbuilding and without underbuilding for what could be coming in the future. So looking at those pieces, you can see the price tag associated with, again, getting that property in shape, building, designing, getting that new school up and running. I also answer sometimes, especially for the Jackson community, you know, Jen, is that going to be like this beautiful new school with all these amenities that our schools here in West Bend won't have? No, it's not going to be designed as, you know, something more transformative or spectacular. It's going to have the same amenities. We have a very clear expectation about what we want each classroom to look like regardless of your address. We also aren't going to purchase everything brand-new for that school. There's plenty of usable things in that school that will actually get packed up and move with us to open that school. So all of those pieces are in consideration. Then looking at the remaining schools, Green Tree, remember I talked about some of the early learning that's at Rolfs, moving into some schools, it'll go to Green Tree and McLean. So you see a little bit of an expansion. PK stands for pre-kindergarten, so those are those youngest students. And then looking at renovations, largely for every remaining campus, you will have a secure entry sequence. If you're familiar with Silverbrook and Badger, it means that you get buzzed into the building and then you are stopped in the office. If you've been to a McLean, if you've been to some of our other older schools, Green Tree included, once you're buzzed in, you could have free rein of the building. So as a security feature, we want a dual secure entry sequence, so you can come in, get buzzed in, welcome to the school, but then you're not authorized until, they deem you authorized to have access throughout the building. So you'll see, that's a large part of the renovation in the front of each of the schools that will remain. And then largely at Green Tree, there was an addition placed where the gym is, so they have a separate cafeteria and gym. We want to make sure that the remainder of our schools have that. So that's how Jackson would be built. Fair Park and Decorah do not have that right now. But looking at those pieces, largely it was a lot of bathrooms that maybe weren't touched prior, so some of the windows, some of those pieces. And then we have detailed for you, not just on this slide, but also if you visit our website, it gives you kind of all those buckets of what those projects are for each one of the schools and the projected costs associated with each campus. So for Green Tree, largely, again, when you think about your early learners, they have en suite bathrooms in their classrooms, so it's redoing those old ones from kindergarten, getting those 4K classrooms ready, and some things that hadn't been touched before. A lot of times, my eyesight is not that good, but a lot of times in some of the project plans, you'll see things like bell's clocks or PA, public address systems, and they're mapped into either the systems or components of safety and security. Those are generally bundled. It doesn't mean I want a fancy clock in every classroom. It means that that system is probably near end of life and we need to replace it. That is part of safety and security. When I can call in and alert staff, students, et cetera, I need to be able to reach them from every part of our campus. So right now, some of the schools, I don't have capacity to do a public address to the outside, if they were outside, to get them into the school, that kind of piece. So there's some pieces in there that are part of safety as well. McLean, again, expanding to the pre-kindergarten through fifth grade, looking at finalizing that secure entry sequence that you see up there, and then some amenities of some bathrooms with our early learners that will be added, and then some renovation of a couple spaces there. Their mechanicals, things like that, we're fairly up to date. I talk about McLean being built in a time that was really built to last. When you walk into that school, you're looking at terrazzo tiles and marble and solid wood, and sometimes that's just a different construction period. So it's been very durable. It has a long-lasting future in front of us as well. So you can see, again, touching some things that maybe haven't been touched in prior projects. We haven't gone in, and you'll see that at the other schools that were touched more recently, like the Green Tree that I spoke of, or Badger and Silverbrook. Andy referenced those prior referenda. The community invested at those times, and we've maintained that investment. So you'll see, if you look at that facilities assessment, those are still operating in the green, no really big deficits to take care of. But you see us picking up a couple projects on those campuses that maybe weren't touched before. We're not going in and touching something that was just touched in 2012 or 2009. We're taking care of maybe what was left behind. For Silverbrook, it's a large change. Currently, it's serving grades five and six. This would be serving now K through five. So it's set up in wings, set up in pods right now, so the design is really lending itself to that. You'll see in that front, a lot of that blue is to, again, welcome early learning, get those amenities of having en suite bathrooms into classrooms, as well as some other spaces. We would anticipate that our earliest learners would be clustered in that front there, nearest to your gym, your other amenities, and those other outlying wings would be for your older students at the elementary school. When people ask me about the closure of Decorah and Fair Park and the footprint of the school, largely we're going to pick up the students and staff and move them forward. There will be probably a little boundary wiggling here and there, but we do offer full intra-district choice for any family. So if there's a school maybe closer to a babysitter, closer to something else you'd like to request an alternate, we allow that. So if that's something that works, we'll consider that too. But largely, again, I talked about that enrollment bubble being on the doorstep of the high school right now. We, through the years, have already experienced that decline in elementary enrollment. So a lot of times, people are talking about school closures, and they're also talking about, you know, letting go of staff or things of that nature. Again, we've garnered those efficiencies over time through attrition, through retirements, maybe not replacement of other things. So we're really talking about picking up the kids and the staff and moving them into a building with the amenities that they deserve on that. But again, that conversion is key so that we can welcome students. For Silverbrook, you see, again, basically just taking care of those pieces that were highlighted, and the other remaining piece is the original loading dock from that building, which is currently non-functional, as well as the projected costs with that campus. Badger would return to its original design. It was always designed as a 6'8" middle school model, so it would return to that. One of the pieces we talked about are the difference of capacities. What's a functional capacity? What's the actual capacity? How many students can you welcome? Those kinds of pieces as you examine what's different when you move into a secondary schedule. Recall, that's where you switch classes. So in elementary, it's a designated classroom, you know, that's Mrs. Smith's classroom, and I stay in that classroom all day. In a middle school model, in a secondary schedule, you have some multi-use of your rooms, which allow you to really look at capacity different. So we've done test scheduling on the campus to ensure that we have room to welcome the grades six through eight, in addition to not making it too tight or too overcrowded, that we couldn't have room to grow. And again, projects associated with that. I'm sure they wish that the gym floor were replaced going into this year. We've been fighting, it's been buckling. I have industrial dehumidifiers in there. That's still pieces of the original gym floor in there. So things of that nature, fixing things that were not attended to in the past. Again, that school was already designed, it's just picking up some of those pieces that are problematic and need attention. Now they've reached end of life. East and West, when we close out our district offices, we would make room for ourselves at the high school in that footprint. We looked at a couple pieces. You can see the secure entry, where you would traditionally see the columns that talk about your Spartans and Sons, they're branded in the beginning. We would make a true secure entry sequence, again, at the high school. Right now, if you're entering at our high school, you enter on opposite ends, and there's just a kiosk, and we're counting on our visitors to get to the office and do what they're supposed to do. So again, our attention to a true secure entry sequence. And then you see us remodeling, creating a little bit more warehouse space. We do have district warehouse materials, curriculum materials that need to come with us, and then taking care of some renovations on the first floor, not only to make space for us, but also to configure and update those classrooms. Again, this is a price tag and a project that comes in almost equal to our Jackson Elementary building. I'll show you that particular. In that second floor, so we displace and clean up that first floor, our science rooms and labs are there right now. An interesting thing about science labs, no different than the most expensive spaces being your kitchens and bathrooms, it's the same is true for your science labs. All the plumbing in there is glass to accommodate chemicals and other things. So we had two options to explore, renovate in place or take us to the second story. We looked at both to see which was more cost-efficient, and it was actually more cost-efficient for us to lift them up, the district office to take that place on the first floor, and then renovate those labs on that second floor. So looking at that, again, the projected costs and different projects that are associated. A question that we received in spring from a couple were, hey, does this mean that we should be looking at going to one school or two schools? How does that impact? We talked about that at one of our work sessions as a school board, and it does and doesn't impact our facilities. The way it impacts our facilities is that it could accelerate the depreciation of some things, such as our turf on the field at the stadium. Generally, a high school's fielding one team on it, I'm fielding two, plus times two, you know, different lacrosse teams, soccer teams, et cetera. So sometimes you're just having accelerated use. Our board at the time didn't want to commingle the emotion of that question. We do need to bring that to our community as a non-binding referendum question, per our board policy, but we just felt that the time wasn't right to commingle that. So I'm sure it's something that they will explore in the future. Every single piece of this project serves all the students. So regardless if they were slotted for an east, a west, you know, a unified school, those are all spaces that are still needed to serve students. So that's how we got to, when you look at all the schools that would remain, that every single campus would be touched to really deliver some of, as I said, those expected elements for everyone in the school district to have access to. And again, arriving at that as that first big phase of our long-term project. Are there any questions from the council regarding our work?
Okay, thank you, Jen. Does anyone have questions for Jen? Well, I do, Jen.
Go for it.
You probably answered the first question that I have. I was going to ask you, with UWWC available, and you mentioned that busing kids, kindergarteners up here would be about an hour trip.
Yeah, probably over.
So I guess my question would be, would it be feasible, instead of building a new Jackson school, to bus Jackson kids to UWWC, which is, to my understanding, there is, and classrooms are basically ready to go?
I've toured, I've toured, so...
But you need assistance from all entities involved with the university to possibly make that happen. But again, the question was, it's going to cost a lot more to bus all the kids up this direction?
Right. Some of the logistics of that, when you looked at perhaps moving that footprint, and sometimes, just quite honestly, I get that, well, should Jackson detach and become its own? And the Jackson community, again, fast-growing, is part of our district. We serve multiple municipalities, and they are one of them. So it's not a question of, you know, we should serve them or should we serve them here or there. But we did look at kind of what's best on behalf of the kids for that, and again, it just didn't make sense to bring them up here. But I'm glad you talked about the UW conversation. That is a conversation that we've had, just alerting our school board too, as far as the opportunity. That's a community asset that's co-owned by the county as well as the city, and we've been invited to tour that and look at that, and how could we maybe look at sharing that space or collaborating in that. So we're excited to have a seat at the table with that conversation, because right now we have some unique programs. People might not realize that at our district office, we serve over 175 students in unique programs, and they're being served in a converted office building in a basement with no windows. That is not the best place to serve students. So if there's an opportunity to look at that kind of collaborative use of that resource, we really welcome that. So we're excited about that potential. Just as we're excited too, we partner with Moraine Park. So when I look at things that are needed at our high school, I don't have enough space for construction. Moraine Park hosts us and has that over here. We also work really well across districts so that I don't have to design and create something. So right now, Kiwascom hosts our agriculture program. I don't have enough students, I don't have the footprint for that. They host that, I host the construction program, and we further partner with Moraine Park to use their facilities so that we can do that. So we always have an eye out on that collaboration across entities and that opportunity to serve.
Okay, great. And one other question would be, now with the buildings like Fair Park and the other one was...
Decorah?
Yeah, Decorah. Have you have any interest in anybody looking at that, or what's going to happen to those buildings?
Sure. So a couple pieces. The plans that we're talking about, because that referendum is in fall, and I talked about kind of all those phases of design in front of us, the changes that we're talking about would occur in three years' time. We wanted to have enough runway in front of us to successfully transition students, our staff, all of those pieces, and have a mindful plan around what future use would be. At our last school board meeting, we will deliver... At our last school board meeting, we will deliver in October a what-if plan. We think it's important for the community to know, should we not get authorization from the community for this referenda, then what would happen? What are we going to need to do to attend to the capital maintenance? We talk very clearly about schools will still close, but how will we phase that? What will we do on those pieces? So we'll be delivering that. We also have reached out to have those properties assessed so that the board can further examine, you know, what's the viability of those properties? Should we be hanging on to something? Should something, you know, be rented out? Should it be sold outright? To get some guidance for our school board on that. I don't know that that culmination of that conversation and that potential will be solved by November 5th. I do know we're committed to having that what-if around the building closures, all of that laid out. But again, maybe not final, like, yep, this one's being sold, this one's doing this. So, but we are in attention. We would assume that part of that next design and planning, we'd be hearing from our community as part of that, to hear what ideas they have. Because I know that's a concern, especially as I talk with Decorah families, you know, they're nested right in the middle of a neighborhood. What could possibly go here? Those kinds of things. We want to be sensitive to that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Is anyone else? Yes, all the women.
This is a small thing perhaps, but I noticed that Green Tree and McLean have the pre-K, but Jackson does not. Jackson has just the kindergarten of five.
Sure. That's because Jackson Community Center actually hosts the program there. They have both Head Start. Remember, I talked about some of those 4K community partners? They're one of them. And in fact, they're adding separately onto their own building. So that's a great question. They have those amenities. We didn't need to include them in our footprint.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I, my question, I guess, frame it up this way. If you had to sum up, what is the benefit to residents in the city of West Bend of moving forward with this referendum? What would that be?
So it avoids $51 million in capital improvements that would be needed in this footprint over the next decade or so. So I always translate that, make sure people don't misunderstand. It doesn't mean I get to pocket 51 million and put it elsewhere. It means I get to avoid trying to have to come up with those funds. So again, it allows the capital improvement budget that I have right now, which is, in addition to our operational, $1.8 million with policy having us apply 4% growth to that every year, it's going to make those dollars stretch further. So when I talk about that investment and then future forward, that would be a large piece.
Great, thank you.
Any others? Mayor Olloman Allen or Olloman Sparts, do either one of you three have a question for Jen?
My question was asked. Thank you, John.
I don't have a question. I just want to thank Andy and Jen for being here tonight, and I'm sorry I can't be there with you, but best of luck in this process over the next, well, just shy of two months. And so best of luck, and thank you very much for your presentation tonight.
Thank you. I would just like to note for our community, we have the first open house coming up this week on Wednesday. Visit our website. We'll also have another one in October. The format for that open house, our community sessions were largely presentation, table discussion. These will actually be stations. If you're interested in the financial aspects, Andy, as well as our financial partner Baird, will be on hand with some key graphics and elements for you to discuss, ask questions. If you're interested in the facilities part, Tim Harder, our director of facilities, as well as the Findorf team will be there. If you're interested in the instructional program or general pieces, our directors of instruction and student services, as well as myself, will be on hand. So we'd encourage residents to attend one of those open houses, learn more, ask questions, provide feedback.
Where is that held?
That, yeah. Yeah, I forget which high school cafeteria. The first one's going to be at the high schools, the second one's going to be at Jackson. So one kind of been each. Yep. But our first one's Wednesday, this coming Wednesday. And again, those dates are right on our website as well. And also too, for our community members, there's so many community members who may not have students in our schools, but our schools are the community's assets. You know and are familiar because your Parks and Rec program also work within our schools, so they might be accessing buildings in some way. But on our website as well, you can sign up. Our district does a mailing every single Wednesday to our families, but any community member can sign up for that mailing. You just drop in your email address. We'll send that to you every Wednesday. And then in summer, we do every other Wednesday. We also do a quarterly publication called The Vantage Point, where it does kind of a highlight reel of the quarter. We just ended our annual report. So again, that's on our website as well. So if you're interested in getting ongoing publications from us or peeking in on those pieces, those are all there for you as community members to sign up.
One last time. There are any more questions? Jennifer, thank you very much for your presentation and good luck with your referendum. I really appreciate you presenting your presentation.
Thank you. We appreciate the time as well.
We have a public hearing regarding the special assessment for 18th Avenue reconstruction between Paradise Drive and Vote Drive. Good evening, Max.
Good evening.
Let me just one sec.
Good evening, thank you. This item on the agenda is for a public hearing regarding the special assessment for the reconstruction of 18th Avenue between Paradise Drive and Vote Drive. The Board of Public Works and Common Council adopted a preliminary resolution in 2021, and the project was built. We followed the state statutes process, and the report has been completed. Any property currently located outside the city of West Bend, we did calculate their share, how they would be assessed if they were within the city, but those properties would not receive an invoice. Otherwise, the report is showing the share of the cost for properties within the city of West Bend. In the past, the city has offered property owners either options for five-year or 10-year payment plans for their payment of the special assessment at the rate 1% above the city's borrowing rate at the time of the resolution. And we would recommend offering this again to those property owners being assessed. Everything is in the memo or in the report. We recommend that after the public hearing that the council approve the final special assessment report and adopt the resolution levying the special assessment.
All right. I see we have some people in the audience. If you don't mind, please step to the podium, give your name and address, and let's hear what your questions are.
Hello, my name is Bridget Wiesler. My address is 5981 Artist Bay Road, and I'm speaking tonight on behalf of my father-in-law, Anthony Wiesler, whose property is located at 5861 South 18th Avenue in the town of West Bend. My father-in-law purchased the land and the existing home in 1980. He has served as an active member in this community and continues to live on the property full-time for the last 44 years. The South 18th Avenue drainage issue, from my understanding, began in the mid-1990s with the residential development that occurred on the east side of 18th Avenue, roughly the land surrounding Eden Drive and Vote Drive. The developer brought in Phil to raise the site to allow for the residential development, and as a result, they covered up one of the drainage pipes such that the land could no longer drain as it had in the past. That is to say, that the existing drainage pattern was altered by that residential development. To correct, the issue, a new underground pipe was added to the east side of 18th Avenue. Again, this would be possibly mid to late 1990s. And to pay for the work, an assessment was billed against Anthony Wiesler's property. The city should have record of this, related to the date and specific amounts, but my father-in-law recalls the assessment value being in the range of $18,000 to $36,000 against his property. And now we're here today for yet another assessment against his property. Wherein a major sewer line was put into 18th Avenue. A large, would appear to be three-to-four, three-to-four-foot diameter pipe placed four-to-five feet down in the ground. The drainage system appears as if it were designed to serve existing and future commercial land development. And in addition to the construction of a large-scale drainage system, significant roadway improvements were made. Similar to the drainage, the roadway improvements were made in excess of what would be required for the existing residential homeowners along South 18th Avenue. Anthony Wiesler's property is slated to bear $51,191 for this project, a significant amount, representing almost 12% of the total assessed budget. Anthony is the sole resident of a single-family home on this property. The property is zoned R1 rural residential. Again, he's already had an assessment for previous improvements related to this drainage issue charged against his property, and now he's slated to bear an additional $51,000 cost. Such a large allocation of the assessment should be reserved for the nearby commercial users, who will be more directly served by the benefits outlined in the assessment report. Some of the benefits outlined were improved accommodation for modes of transportation, improved vehicle capacity, improved emergency vehicle access, et cetera. These benefits more directly tied to, for instance, Frederd, Walmart, and other commercial users in the vicinity. And it's worth noting that Walmart was left off the assessment entirely. We're asking the common council in the city of West Bend to reevaluate the proposed assessments in a more fair and equitable way, one that considers the benefits this roadway provides for the surrounding commercial users, instead of putting the burden on existing residential property owners. In particular, I'm asking for a reevaluation of the assessment assigned to 5861 South 18th Avenue, a residentially zoned property in the town of West Bend, a property that already has a prior assessment on record for the drainage issue, and a property that has no intention of being converted to a commercial use. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you very much.
My name is Tony Wiesler. I'm the son of Tony Wiesler. I'm speaking on behalf of my father. He's at 5861 South 18th Avenue in West Bend. My parents bought the house in 1980, and they raised me and eventually five of my younger brothers and sisters. My dad and Bob Newman used to tend the apple orchard that's on the property, and one of my fondest memories is waking up at 5:00 AM to go to the farmer's market downtown. We'd often have breakfast at one of the local cafes. We'd go down to the end of the driveway, we'd set up a tent and provide apples to passersby on 18th Avenue. It was a really nice, nice thing for father and son to do. My mom passed away in 2000, and we laid it to rest in the Washington County Memorial Cemetery just down the street. That's the cemetery that has an $84,000 special assessment. We recognize that the city has the power to levy a special assessment on a property for road improvement outside the city boundaries by Section 660707, Sub 1 and Sub 2 in Wisconsin statutes. One of the requirements of this statute is that the property benefit from the work. There's no benefit to the property for this work that could possibly be $51,191.90 for a single-family home. We also believe that using the lot frontage to determine the assessment and not using area, use of the property, or vehicle traffic is an obsolete and unfair methodology. The last WISDOT traffic study on July 18th, 2023 indicated an average of 6,400 vehicles per day. From what I can tell, this makes 18th Avenue the second busiest north-south road in West Bend. It directly benefits a large percentage of the residents of West Bend, and a portion of this cost should be shared by the tax base. It also provides a significant benefit to Walmart, Home Depot, Menards, Meyer, West Bend Cinema, and many other large businesses nearby that rely on 18th Avenue to get their customers there. The linear foot method might be reasonable for residential street, but it's not reasonable to use it for one of the busiest thoroughfares in the city. Use the linear foot method and then cap the assessments for single-family homes. I think a $5,000 assessment cap would be reasonable. Another method is to assign the cost roughly proportionally to primary beneficiaries of the road. Under this method, the assessment for my dad, the other neighbors, and the cemetery would be lower, as it'd be offset by the use of the road to get to and from the large commercial businesses nearby. In short, I think we can agree that asking two homeowners in a cemetery to pay over $200,000 for a half a mile of roadway, where thousands of vehicles per day use that road to reach large businesses, is not reasonable. As an aside, I was talking to a friend of mine who's a civil engineer, and his daughter lives on Timberline, and he drives on 18th Avenue quite a bit, and he couldn't figure out why 18th Avenue was being changed, because the surface was relatively good shape. There wasn't a requirement for significant additional traffic, like the bike lanes. It was a nice add, but it wasn't, it wasn't required, and it was a pretty significant expenditure. I think it was about $1.2 million for a half a mile, or almost $2.5 million a mile for a road. So it was a significant expenditure. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Matthew Strauss, 1433 South 18th Avenue. As per the Wisconsin Department of Transportation, Surface Transportation Program Urban Application Key Program Requirements Confirmation Paragraph L, transportation, construction projects using federal funds except sidewalks are likely general improvements that primarily benefit the public at large and for which special assessments cannot be levied under Statute 66.0703. Municipalities desiring to obtain the required local project funding through special assessments levied against particular parcels should seek advice of legal counsel, see Hildebrand versus Manassha. Also, as per the city of West Bend website, the STPU program provides financial assistance to communities for transportation, infrastructure improvements, helping attract new employers or encouraging existing employers to expand. Funding was to reconstruct 18th Avenue from a rural cross-section to an urban cross-section. 18th Avenue is classified as a minor arterial. An arterial is defined as provide mobility so people can move from one place to another quickly and safely. Special assessments cannot be levied for local improvements. Whether a project is local or general can be established based on purpose and motivation of the project. Based on the requirements for the grant, the stated benefit of the STPU program, and communication from the city, the project was not primarily for local improvements to the assessed properties. The project was for general improvements that primarily benefit the public at large. From the earlier reference case, special benefits must provide an uncommon advantage that either increase the services provided to the property or enhance its value. The uncommon advantage is a benefit that differs in kind, rather than in degree, from those benefits enjoyed by the general public. It can be thought of as an advantage that is in addition to that benefit enjoyed by other property owners in the municipality. Schedule D, Statement of Benefits from the Report of the City Engineer states that benefits are accrued as a result of increased property value due to five statements. These statements do not provide any substantive information to find what is common and how would this then be an uncommon advantage, nor do they provide a figure for the increased value accrued. Statement one, curb and gutter and improved drainage of surface water result in an improved roadway and decreased maintenance. The roadway is a minor arterial that the public at large benefits from. Also, curb, gutter, and drainage of surface water would be desired for an important road serving the community that by definition provides mobility so people can move from one place to another quickly and safely. Statement two, improved accommodation for other modes of transportation, pedestrian and bicycle access. Bike access is, bike access is part of a minor arterial benefiting the public at large. Statement three, availability of a wider road which improves vehicle capacity. As per the diagrams, there was previously 11-to-12-foot travel lane and 4-to-5-foot shoulder. Now there's 11-foot travel lane and 5-foot shoulder. So this just seems like another way of saying that a bike lane was added, replacing the shoulder. I would have preferred a parking lane, and that would have maybe, have been, I would have maybe have then been the primary beneficiary of something. Statement four, improved emergency vehicle access. Is this because of the sidewalk and bike lane? If so, how? Also, emergency vehicle access is improved on a minor arterial benefiting the public at large. The properties in question have not received an uncommon advantage that differs in kind to the benefits enjoyed by the general public. At best, this is a matter of degree of benefit. Statement five, improved safety with street lighting. What lights? There are none. But I'm sure they would be beneficial to all modes of transportation. One basic need is water. Some literature would also add sanitation to that list. Both are available from the city, but were not provided to properties that are on septic and well. Why? Because it wouldn't have benefited the city and public at large. The primary purpose of the project was never to accommodate and convenience the specific property owners being assessed. property owners being assessed. It was always for general improvements that benefit the city and the public at large. If it can be determined that it was for local improvements, property owners would still deserve a clear explanation of how they have an uncommon advantage
One that is in addition to that enjoyed by other property owners in this municipality.
Rather than degree or direct benefit. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Andrew Bruegger. I'm property owner at 12, 1427 South 18th Ave. I'm here to oppose special assessment levy on all properties affected. I'd first like to appeal to the community behind me. Knowing what you know now, if you were to know, you'd individually be charged thousands of dollars for this project, would you have staunchly objected to it? Now, this argument essentially boils down to what the project is to be classified as: a local improvement or a general improvement. Board, I ask you, what is the purpose of this project? Can you define the difference between a local improvement versus a general improvement? A general improvement is one that confers a general benefit, in other words, a substantially equal benefit and advantage to the community as a whole, or public at large. A local improvement is a type of improvement primarily made for the accommodation and convenience for residents of a particular locality that grants special benefits to their property. According to case law, Genrich v. City of Bright Lake, as well as Hildebrand v. Town of Manasha, special assessments can only be levied for local improvements. This case law additionally grants that the purpose of the project is relevant to determining the nature of the improvement because of the manner in which the local improvement is A special benefit has the effect of furthering an uncommon advantage that either increases the services provided to the property or enhances its value. Thus, if the improvement's primary purpose and affect are to the benefit of the public, it is not a local improvement, therefore not subject to a special assessment. According to the STPU grant under the Proposed Improvements Paragraph, quote, "The project's scope includes widening the road to about 52 feet with concrete pavement, curbing gutter, bike lanes, and concrete sidewalks on both sides of the street, improving street lighting, and improved drainage with installed storm sewer. These improvements will not only benefit the adjacent properties, but the traveling public as well." The objective of the STPU urban program is to improve transportation on Wisconsin's federal aid-eligible roads and streets in urban areas. Additionally, in the other reasons to complete this project, the paragraph it states, "There are very few north-south thorough arterial roads in West Bend. 18th Avenue is one of the few that is incurvilinear. 18th Avenue has a higher proposed speed limit and few stop signs. The only other straight north-south arterial that compares is River Road, located 2 miles east. This allows for quicker, more convenient travel between our north and south commercial business districts along Washington and Paradise Drive. 18th Avenue also serves as an alternate to U.S. Highway 45 for those drivers traveling through the city. Just north of the project limits, there is a very popular park, Ridge Run, with no pedestrian or bicycle facilities available for site access. Pedestrians and bicyclists have no safe area to utilize separate from the vehicle travel lanes on this roadway. The city has received numerous requests for bike lanes across, along 18th Avenue from bicycle commuters. This is taken directly from the grant application." Does this sound like a local or a general improvement to you? The Infrastructure Investments and Job Act, also known as the Bipartisan Infrastructure Law, continues the Surface Transportation Block Grant Program. The STBG promotes flexibility in state and local transportation decisions and provides flexible funding to best address state and local transportation needs. According to STPU, the use of these funds is prioritized safety for all users in transportation, network planning, design, construction, and operations. Section 11206 of the BIL defines complete street standards, of which this project was constructed under, as those which ensure the safety and adequate accommodation of all users of the transportation system, including pedestrians, bicyclists, public transportation users, children, older individuals, individuals with disabilities, motorists, and freight vehicles. A complete street includes but is not limited to sidewalks, bike lanes, or wide paved shoulders, special bus lanes, accessible public transportation stops, safe and accommodating crossing options, median islands, pedestrian signals, curb extensions, narrower travel lanes, and roundabouts. A complete street is a safe and feel-safe for everyone using the street. If the purpose of this project is to create a safer, more easily-traveled street according to the STPU paperwork, for those in the community that travel it regularly, why would it be incumbent upon those who live on the city to directly pay for its renovations when thousands of vehicles travel this street daily? The engineer's assessment does not take into account that the public benefit is in kind to the benefit of the surrounding occupants and the city at large. Additionally, in order to complete this project, you are required to use the threat of eminent domain, and majority of cases eminent domain would only be granted in case of perpetrating a public good, further signifying the classification of this improvement as general. As per the report of the city engineer, the benefits accrued as a result of the increased property, the benefits are accrued as a result of property value due to, as Matt stated, curbing gutter improvements, drainage of surface water resulting in improved roadway and decreased maintenance, to improve the accommodation for other modes of transportation, pedestrian and bicycle access, availability of a wider road which improves vehicle safety, improved emergency vehicle access, and improved safety with street lightings. I would argue that each of these benefits is of equal benefit to me as it is the general public at large. According to Wisconsin State Statute 66.0703 stipulating special assessments generally, your police powers to impose special assessment levies would be deemed illegal and in opposition to current case law. I rest my argument.
Thank you very much, sir.
Hi, Don. My name is Anne Stuffel, and I live at 17 Eden Drive in West Bend, part of the, one of the residence where we got this assessment from. I'm not going to give a long speech. I came here mostly to hear what, and I didn't do the research that a lot of these people did, but one thing that I agree with is 18th Avenue has come more of a freeway thing where people are coming and going, and the traffic has increased a lot in there, and I do believe that it is benefits to the city as a whole, not just us who are getting the assessments. I'm not sure how you came up with different prices for different individuals. One thing in the assessment I didn't understand was the miscellaneous charges weren't really defined that were listed, but I'd agree with a lot of the people, and I live there, and I've noticed the traffic that comes through there, and we have a lot of young individuals who use that, that have these little bikes that go [mimicking noise], and then they race up the street up to Decora. So the noise level has increased quite a bit from before it was done, and it's very nice. I'm not saying that the construction isn't very nice, that's not my point. It is very nice, but it has caused some concern amongst us who live there with the increased issues, and a lot of us are retired in there, and to come out with some extra dollars, sometimes that's a little tough. But I didn't come here to lecture anybody on, I mean, they did a lot of research. I didn't do any of that. I just wanted to let you know that I really think that it benefited the community as a whole, because there's a lot of things, we have the DMV down there on that side, you have Mutual as a workplace, you have so many things, you have a theater, a lot of things where people use that road to go there, more than I think they use any other streets in the city. But I would really like you to reconsider and reevaluate what, you know, you think that we should be paying. Maybe it would be easier if everybody shared in the cost, because it's a nice community, and we all live here, and we all benefit from it. So, thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else? Are none? Max? Can you answer a couple of the questions that they had concerns about?
So, John, I would move to close the public hearing if there's nobody else to speak.
Do you want?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, before, Max, do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close.
Second.
Alum Sterning and Hallam and Schmidt. Okay? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, Max.
Okay, so, a few points I noted during the public intervention. The properties in the town will not receive an invoice from the city until they desire to annex into the city, then this calculated special assessment would then be discussed with the property owner at the time of annexation. So at this time, properties in the town outside of the city would not receive an invoice. The methodology of assessment using lot frontage has been what we've used on our projects, and for the legal, I will let Ian respond on the uncommon advantage and all the legal terms that were mentioned during this public hearing. Whether the local improvement versus the general improvement, we're not denying that the project is benefiting the community at large, like any other road project. It's been the city policy to assess properties that are but roads when new improvements are being put in, like sidewalk, curb, and gutter, storm sewer. And I will add that the assessment is calculated only on the local share that the city has paid towards the project, not the full price of the project, so that means not against the federal funds that were received. And regarding the streetlights, I was informed of this. I contacted We Energies, and they are looking into it, because they had a plan where they relocated their poles and they're supposed to put streetlights there, so I'll have an answer hopefully soon, but they're working on that. Thank you.
Thanks, Max. Ian?
So, there's a couple different pieces in play here. The first one is there's a developers' agreement in place for the Didier Estates subdivision, which is very similar to what was in place for the Westminster subdivision, which was the portion that was north of, on the north section of 18th Avenue, and so it has very similar language that says that the, you know, intent is that when the city widens and adds these improvements, you know, the street widening, curb and gutter, sidewalk, storm sewer, streetlights, and water main to that area of South 18th, that it would be assessed. And similar to the Westminster one, that's why you see like that kind of wide range of properties that are not on the, you know, actually not abutting 18th Avenue, is because those are all part of that subdivision, and essentially that was a hedge, just kind of like with the Westminster subdivision. It was essentially intended to, instead of the developer reconstructing a whole street, that when those improvements were added, they would be allocated to those subdivisions, which did increase the traffics on 18th Avenue significantly, and that's all local traffic using it, which, you know, there's a significant number of, you know, residential properties that feed onto 18th Avenue from that. So that's a big piece of the assessments, is that those, you know, that's the West Point condominiums, the Garden condominiums, Westview villas, those are all part of the Didier Estates, as are a couple of other ones. It's kind of piecemeal through there for some of the other properties. The other thing I'll note is the, you know, stormwater is largely a local improvement that's managing the stormwater that's coming off the properties, and yes, there's some on the roadway, but it's largely the ones that, it's largely the stormwater that is flowing from the properties adjacent. Curb and gutter, sidewalk, those are very standard local improvements. You know, curb and gutter and sidewalk are, sidewalk by statute is assessable. It's presumed to be in the, a local improvement. So those portions and the concrete pavement and road base are just, they are not the repaving of the existing road and improvement of the existing road. It's just the portion that is essentially bringing it up to city cross-section, which is what was intended by that Didier, the Didier Agreement originally. Like, that's why they kind of kicked that can down the road, is because they didn't want to have to essentially charge the people who were building at the time for the whole roadway, which is what would have had to have been done if the developer had done it. So, hopefully that addresses some of the issues, and certainly we can review and be more detailed about any other questions you have, but I think the Didier Agreement is one of those things that answers a lot of those questions.
All right. Thank you, Ian. Anything you have, Max?
No.
Nope. Okay, thank you very much. All right, moving on to the agenda items for consideration. Item number two, final resolution leveling special assessment for the reconstruction of 18th Avenue between Paradise Drive and Vote Dr. Do you have a motion? I'll make a motion.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we postpone vote on this matter to allow some considerations for the other decisions or other information that we received tonight. The fact that this is probably the first time that people are hearing of the developers' agreement and the Didier involvement in this, so I guess I would like to allow them time to review those documents and to look at that and see how it affects their opinion on the project as a whole.
I second that motion.
All right. We have a second, so what we will do is we'll postpone this. Go ahead. Yep, okay, we'll have a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
All right. Thank you very much. So again, we will be postponing this final resolution until the next meeting. Item number three, mayoral appointment to bid board, Kristi LaFonte. Do you have a motion? Accept?
Motion to approve.
Alum Sterning?
Second.
All the women's slicer. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. First Amendment to National Guard Lease. Good evening, John.
Good evening. How are you guys? This evening, we have a First Amendment to the National Guard Lease. The Guard reached out to us a few months ago. They actually have access to some funds from the federal government, but in the process, they found out that their HALIPAD is actually not in the lease agreement, so we have redrawn the boundaries of the lease agreement, making sure that all of their facilities are within the lease area, which will allow them to access those funds.
Okay. Any question for John?
Motion to approve.
All right. We have a motion.
Second.
And Alum and Schmidt, second. All those in favor?
Sparks.
Aye.
Aye. Sorry, Sparks.
Hold. Motion carried. A resolution, item number five, resolution approving an amendment to the project plan of Tax Incremental District Number 16, City of West Bend, Wisconsin. Good evening, John Conquinn.
Good evening, everybody. The purpose of this amendment is to add project costs specific to the improvement for Indiana Avenue. It also allows for an update to the overall cash flow analysis and conditions within the Tax Increment District, all to the positive. The district is ahead of schedule and is anticipating significant more increment than what was originally shown in the project plan to the tune of approximately $43 million. From a cash flow standpoint, the district is anticipated to close within 18 of its allowable 27 years or in the year 2040. So that's the purpose of the amendment. On September 3rd, the amendment On September 3rd, the amendment was taken up by Plan Commission as well as the initial meeting of the Joint Review Board, so this is kind of the third step in the process, assuming the resolution is successful this evening. It'll go before the final meeting of the Joint Review Board on October 7th.
Motion to approve.
Okay, Almond Burquist and Alderman Sizer. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you very much, John. Item number six, 2024-2025 election inspector appointments. Do you have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Almond Singhstein?
Second.
And Almond Sternig. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Item number seven, Kellamarine ATV Association ATV, UTV Make-A-Wish, Wisconsin Charity Ride Special Event. Okay, we, this has been done the last couple of years, so do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Hang on, the chief's coming.
All right.
That's fine, I didn't, just from your look, John, I thought maybe you needed a little information. We've had this event, I think this is maybe the third or fourth year. It's allowable in our ordinance through a special event permit to open the specific roadways for ATV traffic. This group has always been very responsive and responsible with us. Again, I reiterate, it's for a short time window for the special event for ATVs to be allowed on the specific roadways, mainly Scenic Drive West and up Villa Park and then a spur that gets on Wildwood to let them access some restaurants. But for the most part, the groups are using the north-south corridor of Scenic and Villa to get north of the city. Group, but Tim, Tim Rohr, the president there, is always responsive, works with the police department, will assign CSOs that day for the specific time that the majority of their group is coming through. So we do not oppose this.
Any questions for the chief?
I'll just say that I talked to a number of people in Villa Park afterwards and they always say it's fabulous and the kids love watching and they cause no issues, so nobody up there's got any concerns.
All right, thank you very much, chief. We have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Almond Singhstein? Almond Smith, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay, reports, bid for report. Who's going to take that?
Yeah, hold on just a second.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm just pulling, pulling up my notes. Okay, on August 6th, the bid board met for a regular meeting at 8:15 in the police, police training room. We had a delivered financial report. We had an open forum with the community on the 2025 bid operating plan. We approved the 2025 bid operating plan. We adjusted some 2025 board meeting dates to avoid conflicts with things like elections and so on. And we set a November meeting date for November 12th, 2024. Again, that was selected to not conflict with the general election on the 5th of November. Any questions?
We have no questions. Mark, hope you're getting better.
I am getting much better.
All right, great. Item number nine, airport commission.
Yep, we met on August, I'm sorry, we met on September 11th, approved our minutes from the August 5th meeting. We had an amendment, we approved the amendment to the National Guard lease, which we just approved tonight. And then we had a discussion on a fuel farm. There's money available and we're working to improve our customer visitor experience by rearranging the way they are able to fuel the planes and to make it more of a 24-hour service operation. So that's all part of working towards improving your port for better experience for our customers. And that was our discussion.
All right, thank you very much, John. Does anybody have questions for John? There are none? All right, thank you very much. City administrator update. Jay?
I'll just share a few things with the council this evening. First of all, we had the opportunity to partner with some community partners, including Jen Wimmer, who was just here, and Pete, Pete Rettler from Marine Park Technical College on an EV grant opportunity, chargers. We have very few chargers throughout the city. The only public chargers that we have are the couple of Level 2 chargers that we put in place as part of the Main Street project in our, in our Fine Street reconstruction. This grant was a, was a federal DOT opportunity for high-level chargers, so Level 3 chargers, and getting them out at the school, high school area, technical college with their new construction, and then in our downtown strategically located, upgrading our, our Level 2 chargers to Level 3s. I don't know how much of a shot we have, these are very competitive grants that are nationwide. We did receive some letters of support from the mayor and the individuals that I mentioned are municipal partners in, in having that opportunity. In addition to the Wisconsin Secretary of DOT wrote us a letter of support as well. We're working with Representative Baldwin's office to get a letter of support that way as well. So we're hopeful, but I don't, I don't really know how those things go. I just wanted to thank Jess and Max, who put a bunch of work into getting that grant off and on time. And we'll see, those kind of opportunities don't come along very often and just wanted to inform you in case we are successful and you have an opportunity to review and, and accept or deny that grant opportunity once, if we're lucky enough to receive it. So we, we're pretty aggressive with grant opportunities and you guys push us to try to find money when, when we can and improve our community and this is a great opportunity to do so. At the last council meeting just a week ago, I shared with you that we were continuing to negotiate with our three professional unions that we have that have negotiation abilities with the city. Our, our negotiation team at the city concluded with the fire department and with the police department supervisors union, had, have come to tentative agreements on both of those, so they need to ratify them with their respective groups and then you'll see them before council in the, in the near future, assuming that they ratify them. And then we have one more police department, their association with the patrol officers and detectives that we're still continuing to, to negotiate with, so that is ongoing. And then lastly, I'll share that Jess and I have an opportunity to speak at the International City County Managers Association on intentional communications this coming Saturday, so we're going to be out of town for a few days and really proud of the fact that we were selected for that opportunity to present at a nationwide, international really conference. It's out in Pittsburgh this year and it's a topic that we know that we could always do better at, but we feel like the city of West Bend is a pretty positive model for the, not only the state, but for the nation to hear from. So we're, we're going to be representing the, the city and the state at a, at a international level in, in Pittsburgh this coming Saturday. And I just wanted to share with you all that we're going to be out doing that and, and out for a few days, but back Wednesday of next week. That's my report, Mr. Sherman.
All right, well, congratulations to you and Jess. Good luck, have a great week there. Okay, Alderperson? Alderman Butchley?
I have nothing.
Alderman Allen, do you have anything?
I, I do. Once again, it's that time of year for the aldermen to meet with the constituents at Free Coffee Friday at the library. This is coming up September 27th, which is a week from Friday, at the, the West Bend Community Memorial Library. It is from 10 until 11 on Friday morning, the 27th. We will be doing the even district alderment. These are the, the aldermen who will be standing for election this coming, starting in January, I guess, December for getting, getting on the ballot. So the, we, we try and separate the people that are going to be politicking as far away from the politicking side of things. So it's more of the general information and a chance to answer questions to the constituents. It's always a lot of fun, the coffee is free, and so are the cookies.
All right, thank you very much, Alderman Allen. Alderman Burquist?
No, sir, nothing to report today.
All right, thank you. Alderman Sternig?
Just one thing, congratulations to Heidi Sternig, of course a relation of mine, who actually started today in her new role as the Executive Director of Big Brothers Big Sisters of Washington County here located downtown West Bend, so congratulations to my wife for that.
As well, as well, yep. Alderman Sizer?
Sure. Last week, September 12th, there was a ribbon cutting at Charter Senior Living. It was a great event, a lot of people, a lot of camaraderie, little food, and then they followed up with a reception at the bend. A lot more camaraderie and friendship again, it was a lot of fun, a lot of food. I had the opportunity to spend some time chatting with a couple who are from West Bend, but they're currently living with a daughter in Campbellstown, and they're on the list to move into Charter, so they're very excited about that. And they were there to meet the developers and, and meet everybody else. So it was a nice event and we're glad to see that the ribbon cutting for Charter Senior Living has occurred.
All right, Alderman Sparks.
He's got nothing, he's unmuted.
You're muted, you're muted, John.
John, we can't hear you.
Sorry, I, I pretty much had nothing to add.
All right, Alderman Smith?
Nothing new since last week.
All right, Alderman Singhstein?
I also have nothing new.
Okay, Mayor, do you have any updates?
Just want to say thank you to the council for approving the bid board appointment of Kristi LaFontaine, commonly known to many as Kristi Mack. She is taking the spot on the bid board, filled currently by Wes Feist, the owner of The Outbreak and The Antidote. Wes and his wife have had a change in their schedule in the morning with a child in school, so he asked to step down, but a big thanks to Wes for his service on the bid board. And I'm very confident that Kristi Mack will do a great job. She's very excited about it, she's a big supporter of all things downtown, and I think she'll be a great addition. So thank you for that appointment tonight.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Has anybody got anything coming up for the weekend? There is none? Being no further business before the common council, I adjourn as chair. Good night.